Okay, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Cunningham Town Board. It's Monday, February 10th, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustees Wu?
Yes.
Here. Jacobson?
Here.
Hersey? Brown?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Hazen?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. Next up is minutes from the meeting of January 30th, 2020. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Is that Dennis and Jared?
Yes.
Any addition, any corrections?
Nope.
Okay, stand, accepted as read. Will all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Any additions to the agenda? Seeing none. Public participation? No one in the audience. Committee to verify bills. Danielle?
So I just passed out the supervisors' memo. What we had is for the town fund, we have $32,659.92. From the general assistance fund, we have $43,169.01, and the total was $75,828.63. I'm happy to take any questions about the bills.
Mary Alice?
So on the B.C. statement, there is a charge for Luke's Lobster in Chicago.
That's a weighing question.
Oh.
So essentially, all the Luke's, oh, I'm sorry, no, Luke's Lobster in Chicago, I apologize, there's several. So I will get to this in the staff memo, but myself and our intern Naomi and Martell Miller, our caseworker, all went up to Chicago at the invitation of Representative Ramirez, who's the chair of the Illinois Progressive Caucus. And I was asked to testify about housing needs for low-income families. So I testified that we had lunch.
Okay, thanks. And it was delicious, by the way, if you ever go. Luke's Lobster is a great place.
I've never heard of it. I mean, Lobsters in Chicago.
It's all lobster all the time.
Any other questions? Okay. Is motion to approve these for filing?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the town fund balance and the general assistance fund balance as indicated.
I'll second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Jared. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustees Wu?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Miller?
That motion passes. Reports of officers? There's an update on local housing insecurity and homelessness. Danielle?
So briefly, just wanted to let you know, in terms of general assistance, we're up to 95 participants. 91 was the last, was the last month's number. Thirty are homeless. It's about half male and female. Average age continues to be 47. I also have been keeping totals for the year, so about 201, exactly 201 people served by GA, and the total homeless is 76. So very large homeless population amongst the total served in this fiscal year. I will have more specific statistics, but it looks like we're serving about 1,000 unique individuals per year. We're still crunching data from 2019, but that means 1 in 40 residents, approximately, of Urbana is served by Cunningham Township. Rental assistance stayed low again. I was surprised by that. We had five rental assistance services, up from two last month, three were eviction prevention cases. We've typically, we've averaged 12 per month, 82 for the fiscal year in total. Just wanted to let you know about a school of social work partnership. You'll most likely be meeting our new intern Naomi Chacon, who is, I'm working as a field instructor, and there's five bachelor's students. Naomi is there 32 hours a week. She's specifically working on subsidized housing options, mapping them across the county. She just finished that project, and she is now helping participants who are coded as homeless or at high risk in our system to apply for housing options. I have four other students who come every Thursday, and they are currently running a drive to ask places of worship in Urbana to adopt a month for snacks for our neighbors in need, so they would provide snacks to township. Next, they're going to work, and I know this was an idea of Bill's last year, but they will be helping participants who have earned income in 2019 to access their earned income tax credit through connecting them with pre-tax support. So starting next week, that will be their, their project. And then we are running a campaign with the students to gather old smartphones, clear them, and set them up for Wi-Fi calling. We've had a lot of problems communicating with our participants, and so we want to set up a program to help recycle those, those phones. We do have a structured internship and volunteer program. We can accommodate at this point eight interns per semester. We have four, excuse me, five interns and four volunteers, and they're not only students. We have a high school student from uni. We also have a gentleman who's 50 years old and everything in between. We serve people with disabilities who may be seeking community engagement, people with criminal convictions who are trying to develop a work history, or students who crave real-world experience. So we kind of serve all of them with our internship program. And they can send their cover letter and resume to me at supervisor@cunninghamtownship.org. We continue the coat and hat drive. You can drop them off, coats and hats, gloves and mittens and scarves at township, or all of the above minus coats at the library. And I have passed out an invitation to our stories, our places, our resilient selves. This is the second of this time this exhibition is being shown. It's, it's updated and improved, and includes more voices, has a number of artists, all of whom are based in Urbana. And you are certainly welcome to come celebrate their work and their stories with us this Thursday at the YMCA on campus, the gallery, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. That's Thursday, February 13th. And just, I have been extremely concerned about the issue of food subsidies for what is considered able-bodied adults without dependents. I think that's A-B-A-W-D is the formal term. That's pretty much everyone we serve on general assistance. We sent out a letter alerting folks to their changes, and we've started to help those who appear to apply for, qualify for exemptions, they have a disability, they're not able to work, they're homeless, the homeless is exempt. So we're helping people to go through that process. There certainly will be some who will be subject to the work requirements. And last but not least, I did share with you basically the same thing I shared with the Illinois Progressive Caucus. I shared this housing security and homelessness in Champaign County brief sheet. I also shared it with the mayors and state rep Carol Ammons in our meeting, although there's been some things tailored for the Illinois Progressive Caucus. But essentially, at this point, we don't have specific recommendations. What I wanted to show you is the same thing that we showed the Illinois Progressive Caucus, give you a chance to review it and sink in. We'll be talking about what are some of the different areas to ameliorate, some of these issues. I'm happy to provide the citation in any case, if you're interested. And some of it is primary research that we've been doing through the FOIA process or the conversation process with the Circuit Clerk's Office and, you know, various police departments, et cetera. Everyone's been very cooperative in getting us data so that we could try to produce a picture of what housing insecurity looks like in our communities so that we can, you know, we can help address it. I'm hoping that this would also be helpful in the comprehensive plan process and the annual action plan as we go forward. With that, I guess I will take any questions that the town board has.
Bill?
Thanks for the housing report. I thought it was really interesting that it looks like we're about 5,000 vouchers short of a full deck, basically. So there are about, what, 1,500, 1,600 vouchers out there, about the same number of people on waiting lists, and they have to wait, on average, three and a half years. So there's some turnover, but not a lot. So how is that 5,000, so I guess percentage-wise, we're satisfying, what, maybe 20% or something?
Yeah, if you look at the first bullet point, the tenant union estimates that we are serving 80%. That, that's, that's their past stat, and that's, that is...
So we're serving 20%, and 80% aren't getting served. So how's that compare nationwide? Do you know, are we above average?
It's pretty on par with, according to Astor's calculation, she's been following this with Hudfordwell. She says it's about, you know, 1 in 5 who is served, and that nationally, that looks similar. The, the issue is that, and I've spoken with the mayor about this, and is that we, at the Housing Authority, we have room to expand our vouchers. We certainly have the dollars. If the external investments come through as anticipated, we should actually, and what I mean is the investments outside of Champaign County, really, that is meant to, to, to increase the vouchers that we have locally. What I'm told is that one of the issues, that one of the reasons we don't issue additional vouchers is because we have so many that are circulating, so I included that statistic in this report because it's relevant. We, our interns did a, a search on the last two years of, because each month, the Housing Authority reports how many people are circulating. So 85% of voucher holders, on average, were looking for a place. Like, if we look at just the last year, 6%. And so we really need to look at what, how can we make it easier and more for landlords to, you know, work with the Housing Authority. It's not, there is certainly an issue of discrimination. There's also an issue that landlords have to go through an inspection process that can delay a move-in. And so the Housing Authority is now, and we voted on this last fall, is that if you are renting to a voucher holder in your apartment, and the voucher holder leaves, the Housing Authority will pay approximately one month for you to hold that, that apartment, get it re-inspected, and then bring in a new tenant with a voucher. So I think that will help in some ways in terms of there being gaps in income for landlords. But we should be looking at other ways, you know, understanding from the landlord community, understanding from the renter community, what are some of the barriers that they're facing in terms of finding a place to live? Because there is, it seems like there's a high number of folks who are circulating with vouchers who are not finding places.
Well, I wanted to let folks know, I have been following up after our meetings with Danielle and Representative Ammons, and we met with a group of property owners and managers who have apartments in southeast Urbana. And so I asked them, I said, you know, we have this gap between people who need housing and all these vacancies. You know, what, what are some of the factors? And I was shocked, actually, and I emailed you this information today, Danielle. I was shocked when one of the managers said, you know, I get, I get calls all the time from people, many of whom have housing vouchers. We take housing vouchers. Our apartments are very affordable, but people are looking for houses. And especially, I think people with families would prefer to live in a house versus an apartment. So, so it's not just a simple issue of, we have all these vacancies, and we have people who, who can fill them. It's, people also have preferences about what kind of housing they want, and there seems to be a demand for single-family homes to rent versus an apartment. So that's contributing to this, it could be contributing to some of these people just circulating, waiting for a house to open up. And we need to think about how to, how to close that gap as well. I was, I was shocked when I heard that. She said, in the last six months, she, and this was one manager, probably had 50 calls like that, when people called up, said they were looking for a place, when she described what she had, which were various, you know, two or three-bedroom apartments. They said, no, I want a house. So there's, there's got to be a way to make sure we're connecting people with the type of housing that they want as well.
And also, that's helpful with landlord outreach, with the Housing Authority, is doing specific landlord outreach. I've been helping with that in Urbana, connecting with landlords, helping to connect them to the information about rent, like what the process looks like, so that it's not frightening, it's, you know, it's very clear. They're producing materials about this. I hadn't heard that, so that's really helpful. But I think in doing landlord outreach, we should look at who has the single-family homes.
Right, right. I mean, that's, that seems to be...
There's quite a few that kind of specialize in that area.
And that seems to be in demand, too, and that might help, help meet the needs of at least some of these folks who have a voucher that they can't find the type of housing that they want. So, so we'll follow up on that.
Yeah, as you probably see with this two-pager, I think that it's a very multi-pronged approach. I mean, for each bullet point, I feel like there's a different approach. And I look forward, you know, I think it's good to digest it, and I would like to have an additional conversation where we talk through some recommendations. Okay?
Okay. Any other questions?
If not, I'm not sure, Wayne, do you have a report to the, Officer's report or no? Okay. I think there, if there's no other business for me, I might cut out unless there's something. I don't think there's any other business on the table. Okay. Mary Alice, do you have a question for me?
I did. I just was wondering, and one of these, and I, and I thank you very much for responding to my email this morning, because I, I've seen these numbers somewhere, but I can't exactly remember where. The homelessness amongst the schoolchildren, do we know what number that is? Like, how many schoolchildren we have that are homeless, either in the county or in Urbana?
Yes, it's, the reason I put this information is because I've gotten two different numbers, one from Regional Office and one from United Way. So let me sync that up, because I think it's important for us to see over a larger timeframe if the numbers are going up or down, and that's unclear at this point.
Okay, thank you.
My news is that there is no news. I was hoping to have a contract for the Eagleview software for you guys this week, but Fred got unexpectedly busy. And so hopefully, we'll have something to you guys soon for authorization assigned. Also, our website is up. It's www.ctao.us. People can go and search their property. We're constantly updating it, but it is live. We are the first township in Champaign County where you can go online and search your property and download your property record card.
Are all properties up?
All of the properties are searchable. You can download property record cards for residential properties. For commercial properties, you still need to email the office to get a copy of the property record card.
What was the website again?
CTAO, for Cunningham Township Assessors Office dot U.S.
If they, if we see a mistake on the card, can we just email you and say, I only, I don't have three bathrooms. I took them out.
Yes, please, please email us.
Okay.
And yet, please, if you have taken out any toilets in your house, and you want a tax reduction, let us know as soon as possible.
Ah, that's Bill's game, eh?
Kind of sacrilege for you guys, isn't it?
Any other questions? Then I am also going to cut out.
Thank you, Wayne. Any unfinished business? New business? It's Resolution Number 2020-02-005R, which is a resolution regarding the release of closed session minutes for the period ending January 31st, 2020. Can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to release those minutes.
I'll second that.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Is this a roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes?
Trustees Wu?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. With no further business before the town board, this meeting is adjourned. And this will be followed by an Urbana City Council meeting at 7:00.
That'd be really nice, because that, that facility's been down for a long time. Yeah, as I remember. No. Yeah, I don't, of course, I haven't looked at it, you know, real recently, but it used to be a really handy item.
Hey, Eric?
Yes.
Are you going to take the same choices?
Yeah, I'm going to.
Yeah, okay.
No, I'm confused about one issue, because I don't, I don't think there was anything in, on the bus.
No, I'm not sure why it's to you.
Okay, can send it to you.
Were you able to find yours?
No, I couldn't find it.
Me, too. Yeah, I'll put my mom's in. I wonder if anything is on. Did you find one?
Well, now it's here.
Nope. How about? Son. Search. Nope. All right. Let's try my other house. Or, or, yes. Hi. Search.
All right, the meeting will begin. So I'd like to call to order, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, February 10th, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Hersey? Roberts?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Hazen?
He's here.
Yeah. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. Next up is approval of minutes from the previous meeting of January 27th, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. Any corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? We have presentations and public input. I have one public input card from the audience, and this is from Bishop King James Underwood and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Burnett Underwood regarding the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. They are continually concerned with the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? We have a presentation tonight on the financial forecast. It was in your packet today, and the presentation will be given by Elizabeth Hanon and Don Ho. I did want to introduce this just by saying that we're heading into the message in this forecast, and I'm going to steal some thunder here, but I think it's important to emphasize. The message in this forecast is that we're coming up on fiscal year 2021 in better financial shape than we've been in probably the last five years. Well, not just probably, for sure, in the last five years. We've had three straight years of budget reductions, internal reorganizations, selective revenue increases, but tonight, you'll hear that no additional reductions are being recommended for the near future, and that's excellent news. We made budget adjustments totaling, we'll have made, close to $2.5 million in fiscal years 2018 through 2020 to address the structural deficit, to restore public safety pension funding, and to rebuild the general fund reserves. We've established policies to help ensure that our recurring expenditures don't exceed recurring revenue going forward. This will help us maintain a fund balance that's adequate to withstand economic downturns, help provide for a stable property tax rate, and allow us to respond to natural disasters like the tornado that we had last spring, or unexpected opportunities and needs that appear. Three years ago, our goal was to build a strong financial foundation for the future, and we've had to make many difficult decisions since then in order to reach the goal. We're building resilience as our economy grows, and we're going to be in a better position to address critical needs and take advantage of opportunities as they come along in the future. So I wanted to thank specifically our finance staff, Elizabeth Hanon, Don Ho, every city employee, because they have all worked very hard to implement the policies that you've passed. I want to thank city council members who've made some courageous decisions over the past few years. And I want to thank the public and our government partners for their support and understanding as, as we worked through our budget challenges and continue to. So in short, though, I think you should put your sunglasses on, because this forecast is a lot sunnier than it has been in the past few years. So with that, I'll turn it over to Elizabeth.
I don't know if I can top that, but we'll, we'll go over some of the details. But the mayor's exactly right. I mean, I, I feel very good about where we're going. This is, this is the best it's been in the more than five years than I've, than I've, that I've been here at the city. So, so in terms of background, as you know, this is the first step in our annual budget process. In the forecast, we focus exclusively on the general operating fund, which is where we pay for most basic city services, like police, fire, and most public work services. So the purpose here is to evaluate our financial condition and make high-level decisions about the budget process. And one thing, I'm not, I'm not sure if the mayor said this, but one thing I really want to point out, and I'm going to say this again later, is that nowhere in this forecast, in any scenario, even the best case, do we assume that there will be any additional hospital property tax included. So regardless of, of where this goes in the future, I feel like we've kind of weathered that storm. So where we started was with a significant structural budget deficit and a goal to make a $2.5 million correction over three years. We've adopted council policies on limiting recurring spending to 98.5% of recurring revenues, and we've made multiple budget reductions and a few revenue increases over the last few years. So this chart kind of shows you, I'll, I'll call this the how, how we did it chart. So it shows you, starting in FY '18, with some very small budget expenditure reductions. And then this is cumulative. It goes through '18, '19, '20, and '21, where we have some recently approved revenue increases that will only be fully realized next year. And it shows you that, over that period, we've, we've done a total of about 1.34 million in budget reductions and about 1.15 million in revenue increases. And that's, that basically got us to our 2.5 million. So again, we're now heading into FY '21. We're in better shape than we have been for the last five years. In next year's budget, we do... In next year's budget, we do not expect to make additional budget reductions. On the other hand, we're, we're just kind of in the right place. We also don't have a lot of money for additions to the budget, particularly any that have recurring cost. New economic development and growth of our tax base really needs to be our focus going forward because that, that's what's going to keep us in this good place that we finally reached. We have a stable city property tax rate, and we have very little debt. So I always have to give you my disclaimers. We're not hiding a crystal ball in the finance department. We can't really predict the future. There's a lot of things that go into this forecast that are really beyond our control, particularly actions that might be taken by the state legislature. So in this forecast, really, the trends are more important than the details. We just want to focus on trends and kind of determine a general strategy. The goal here is to make sure that we're making timely corrections so that we don't get ourselves into a very bad place in the future. And again, focus on the general fund and no revenues from hospital property taxes anywhere in this forecast. One of the key things that we look at because it's such a big part of our general fund is sales tax. And so this chart shows state and home rule sales tax, adjusted for changes in the rate in the home rule tax and also for the rate of inflation. So you'll see that we had a really long stretch there between, oh, about FY15 and FY19, where we really didn't have much real growth in those revenues at all. Some of that was due to the state imposing a fee on our home rule sales tax collection, but a lot of that trend was driven by the increasing use of e-commerce. So in FY19, the last fiscal year, our inflation-adjusted state, state sales tax revenue grew by about 2.4%, and home rule sales tax revenue increased by only zero, .06%. The projection for FY20 is about 3% higher than what we saw in FY19. The, the growth in the current year is really looking healthy, which was a pleasant surprise, and that is built into projections going forward. So our likely scenario assumes that our growth in the future will keep pace with the rate of inflation, which is a significant improvement. In FY21, you'll see both state and home rule sales tax ticking up there at the end. So again, we expect the underlying growth rate to be only about 2.2%, which is where we expect inflation to be. But what you're also seeing there is the impact of cannabis sales on sales tax revenue because those are subject to the state and home rule sales tax in addition to the 3% cannabis tax. And also, there's a, a relatively small change related to changes in state law for sales tax revenue from e-commerce. And so really, next year, we're expecting about 4.7% growth in sales tax revenue when you wrap it all up together. So I'm going to give this to Dawn.
So the state continues to divert our local government revenue, and that continues to affect the forecast. So the state divert 5% of local government share of income taxes, and then the state also imposed a 1.5% administrative fee on home rule sales tax. And this result in a reduction in revenues up about $250,000 in fiscal year 21. And given the condition of the state fiscal crisis, there continues to be a possibility that these diversion may continue and also increase in the future. So we use two primary indicators of fiscal health for this forecast. The first one is recurring expenditure as a percent of recurrent revenue, and this measure our ability to sustain programs and services over the long term and to ensure that we don't make any commitments, or long-term commitments for which funding may not be available in the future. And the city current policy is budgeting recurring expenditure not more than 98.5% of recurring revenue. The reason for this is to provide a cushion against modest fluctuations. The second measure that we use is fund balance as a percent of recurring expenditures, and this indicates the city ability to withstand economic downturn, natural disasters, to finance cash flows throughout a year, to any unanticipated needs or unexpected opportunities. So the, the city's current policy is maintaining a fund balance of at least 15% of recurring, sorry, 15% of recurring expenditures, and this provides a buffer, but it might not be adequate in the long term. Just that believes that it is unlikely that the best-case scenario will play out, but there's more significant, significant risk that the reality could be closer to the worst-case scenario. In addition, cannabis revenue is difficult to project since it's new and we have no data to work with. Lastly, a recession may occur within the next couple of years. So here's a chart of recurring revenues and expenditures for the likely scenarios. As you can see, there's a big jump in recurring revenues between fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21, and that's because of new revenue increases that council just recently approved. For the whole forecast period, revenue stays above expenditures. For the, for the whole forecast period, which is positive. However, the gap gets smaller over time, and this indicates that the predicted level of expenditures may not be sustainable without sustained development activity or additional sources of revenue beyond the forecast period. So here's a chart of growth in recurring revenue and expenditures. So in fiscal year 20, growth in recurring revenues is higher than growth in recurring expenditures, again, because of the new revenue increases. And starting fiscal year 21, growth returns to a more normal level, and the rate of growth in recurring expenditures outpaced the rate of growth in recurring revenues through fiscal year 25. And so as long as expenditures continue to grow faster than revenues, the city will eventually be in a position of require, requiring periodic revenue increases or expenditure reductions. So development activity also contributes to closing the gap, and additionally, sustained development activity would be one of the best options for eliminating this structural deficit. So looking at fiscal year 23, and this is where the gap appears to be more narrow, and the reason for this is due to several things. The first is growth in pension contributions slowed down a little bit once we reach a planned level of, planned level to get to 100% in 20 years. And that's also the, when TIF II will end, so our property tax revenue will increase. And this is also when we see an increase in income tax and use tax, which are shared on a per capita basis after we have the result from the 2020 census. So this chart shows that fund balance will increase over time in the best and the likely scenario. In the worst-case scenario, fund balance will increase slightly and then start decreasing in fiscal year 23. And in the likely scenario, the city would expect to be above the current policy goal without significant adjustment to the budget. So focusing on the likely scenario, the fund balance is expected to exceed the 15% fund balance goal throughout the forecast period and increase each year after fiscal year 20. In addition, is it quite likely that the 15% minimum balance level is not adequate to deal with a worst-case scenario on unexpected events such as a natural disaster? So after performing a risk analysis based on guidelines provided by the Government Finance Officials, Officers Association, or GFOA, a minimum of 25% would be appropriate. So a minimum of 20% appears to be achievable in fiscal year 21, and we would recommend increase that to 25%, perhaps in fiscal year 22. And lastly, any excess fund balance would most likely be allocated to one-time expenditures or building reserves. And I would turn this over back to Elizabeth.
You take a question?
Can you, I just had a quick question on that last graph.
Yeah.
Yeah, at first when I saw that, I was thinking, well, that's pretty good. It's like a couple million dollars every year, and last year, there's $5 million. That's a lot of one-time expenditures, but this is cumulative, right? So that's 5 million over the five or six years.
Right, correct.
Yep.
Yeah. And, and we would never, from a practical point of view, build up that much fund balance in the general fund. We have lots of uses for that for capital improvements and other things.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so I'm going to wrap this up by talking very quickly about our recommended strategy. One of the big things that we're seeing as you look in the forecast is the benefit of economic development, and so we need to continue to make economic development a priority that's really going to drive our ability to maintain a balanced budget over the long haul. We are going to recommend some updates to the current financial policies, and we will bring those, I'm thinking it's going to be in March at this point, so we want to increase that minimum fund balance number. And we also will have a recommendation for you on ver funding that does not require debt financing. And for this year's budget, we will limit increases for current programs and services. Generally, any increases are going to be one-time expenditures. We want to continue to build reserves, and that may not be just in the general fund, but for example, in our retained risk fund. There's also going to be a point where we need to rebuild those reserves, and we will continue to assess opportunities to use alternate methods of service delivery. That's kind of an ongoing project. So that's it.
Any questions? Eric?
What do you mean by that last phrase, alternate delivery methods for services?
So I, I think we talked about this a little bit last year, but we think as good stewards of public funds, we need to continue to look about whether there are ways that we can do some things cooperatively, perhaps, with other units of government, or sharing services that would just be more, a more cost-effective way to deliver services. Looking at this forecast, I mean, the reality is if there are new things that we're going, that we want to do in the future, that's probably our best shot for finding some savings.
Mary Alice?
So you had mentioned that the state allocates a certain percentage of income tax to all municipalities based on population, something about, some formula like that, but then they hold back 5% and keep it for themselves. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I don't think they would characterize that way, but they make an allocation to the pot that's called the local government distributed fund, and that's distributed on a per capita basis.
My question is, is the 5% a permanent? Is that, is that something that they pass that they said this is the way it is, or is it something they have to pass every single year?
I don't think that it's ever been characterized as a permanent change, but it seems to be the fact. So I think it's, it's been in the last several budgets, yeah.
So it's something that's passed with the annual budget at the state level? I'm just trying to figure out, like, if somebody went in, in the public to contact their representatives and say, please don't short-change our local, how would they do that? That would be a budget process, not a statute, not any kind of rule change?
It's, it's in the package of bills that make the annual budget for the state, so yeah. I mean, you could contact your local legislator and say, hey, I'd like to not have you taking 5% from my local government.
Okay, all right. My second question has to do with the marijuana tax. So I think the estimate was on the likely scenario was 7.5 million, roughly $600,000 a month if you average it out.
That's in sales.
Sales, yes, thank you. Do we have any idea? I mean, they've released statewide how much has been brought in, and they release, what, there's 37 dispensaries in the state of Illinois, but do we have any clue?
So, so that's a fairly educated guess, and our local retailer was willing to share some of his sales projections, which kind of tied with what we expected based on reviewing data from other states for dispensary sales. But it's, I would call it an educated guess, but it's difficult. We'll know much more once, well, specifically, once we expect, once we start to receive the sales tax revenue, eventually, we will get the detail for where they break it down to individual retailers that lag's pretty far behind. So we don't have any of that information at this point. And then, of course, once the local 3% tax kicks in, that'll be the, the clearest way to see it because that'll be a standalone revenue in the budget.
Until October.
Yeah, that tax will be effective in July.
July.
So yeah, October before we actually see revenue, I expect.
Okay, all right.
State sales, statewide sales of cannabis, recreational cannabis in January were about $40 million.
Yeah, and I would add one thing to that. I mean, there's always the, the possibility that we might see a second dispensary in Urbana too, which could push that higher. Right now, we're just counting on the one.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Jared?
Just on that first strategy point of focusing on economic development, we, just as a strategy, we do that because of what the, what it results in five years down the road, not, you know, because, like, we've got two amazing wins that we're going to see come to fruition in 2021, but we won't likely start collecting benefits of that until FY22 or '23.
Yes, correct. But our problem at this point, we've solved the immediate problem. I mean, we're in pretty good shape. Our issue is very long-term, which I think is a good fit for that strategy.
Bill?
So, yeah, speaking of long-term, we still have a lot of capital improvement projects that need to be done, and I guess we're getting kind of into budgeting, and I don't know if we're still getting an update today on the current capital improvement plan, I mean, street projects and stuff.
I have an update on, for, on some of the street projects for you.
I know that over the past year, you know, we've had some staffing shortages and stuff and haven't probably gotten as much done. We definitely have, we'll probably end up with an extra $1 million in the Public Works budget that we didn't spend. So my suggestion would be to just roll that, instead of counting that as extra, just put that into the capital improvement plan for next year, make a transfer, because that's money that we budgeted for Public Works that should have been spent this year, but for various reasons, couldn't have been. So whatever's left, instead of just, I don't know, whatever you normally do, I would, I would favor putting that toward capital projects that, that we've gotten behind on. And then the other point on the census, I know ISR won't be open in time for April for the count, so we'll be missing about 500 people there, so it'd probably be good as soon as it does open to try to figure out the best way to get those people counted so that we can get them counted within a couple of years after the census.
That, that brings up a good point, and a good time for a commercial is the importance of the census, and for everyone to be counted, it's roughly $1,400 a person per year, and much of our revenue is distributed on a per capita basis. So that's why everyone who's living here in late March, April 1st, is counted here, every single person. So, and we're making a big push toward that. Any other questions? I would say normally, when we do the forecast, we've also given kind of an update on general city activities. We decided there was so much to report this time, in the interest of time, we're focusing on the, focusing on the forecast tonight, and then we'll do, hope to do more of the state of the city in, in May as we go into budget, budgeting. Thank you very much. Next up is reports of the standing committees, and it's the committee of the whole, and Eric Jacobson is standing in for Sharice Hirshe as committee chair.
And Eric Jacobson is practically looking for his agenda. Oh, okay, oh, it's on paper. Okay. And I believe that the first, the consent agenda actually is vacant. Is that true? There's, it's an empty agenda, okay. So, we can pass on that. And on the regular agenda, on behalf of the committee of the whole, I move passage of ordinance number 2020-02-003, ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 1407 West Bestland Street, Urbana, Illinois, to Habitat for Humanity of Champaign County.
I'll second it.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Dean. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move passage of ordinance number 2020-02-004, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, namely, increasing the number of Class R1 liquor licenses for Satara Indian Cuisine Incorporated, doing business as Satara Indian Cuisine, 114 South Race Street, Urbana.
Second.
Jared?
Yep.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Jared. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Wu?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Eric. Reports of special committees. Dennis?
Yeah. Just wanted to update you a little bit on some activity in the Sister Cities Committee. We're going to be having a ribbon-cutting at Willard Airport here on Wednesday afternoon, or morning, actually, February 12th at 11:30 PM in conjunction with the UBA and the director of Willard Airport. And what we're going to be doing is placing a new display banner, advertising our connection, global connections in Urbana at the airport with Sister Cities around the world, and we appreciate very much the director of the airport's willingness to place this, this display up in the airport. I think it's really appropriate, and quite a few different regional and major airports honor the Sister Cities programs of their communities, so we're happy to take, to make that part of our community as well. So, it's an open thing, and anybody wants to come by 11:30 in the morning on Wednesday, please stop at the airport. And I think that the city's going to put out a PSA for that as well.
Thank you. Reports of officers, I had, Carol's going to give an update on three or four street projects that you could see in the neighborhoods.
Yep, and I just want to give a shout-out to the folks on the engineering side of Public Works who have been working hard, and our supplemental services, supplemental engineering services contractor, Farah Graham, who've been helping us out quite a bit in order to move these projects forward. So, we have two projects that are funded in part with CDBG dollars, and one is the Dr. Ellis Neighborhood Project, where we're going to be doing some upgrading of curbs and sidewalks and sidewalk ramps and some street repair and so forth, as well as the Kinch Street Lighting Project. Those are both scheduled to start in April, and they should be done by July. So, those are on track. We also have the Vine and Washington Pavement Reconstruction Project. That one needs to be done because of its proximity to the middle school. That needs to be done in that very narrow window of time when school is not in session. And so, that's scheduled to start on the 8th of June. We have this very precisely timed, and it needs to be done by the 7th of August. So, so that's on track as well. We have the EMCOR Phase 5 project that will go out for bid before the end of February. And then, we're on the Lincoln and Springfield resurfacing. We will probably, we're, we're going to be watching construction costs and so forth, but we'll probably go out for bid in the fall with that, get some work done on the, on the concrete side of things like curbs and so forth, and then do the paving part of that project in the spring. So, we have a lot going on, but I think we're, we're getting things moving that had, had been a little bit stalled, so really proud of the folks working on this.
Absolutely. And the neighborhood meeting for the Gather Project is Wednesday?
It's Thursday, I believe.
It is Thursday. It's Thursday at 4:30.
Four, is it 4:30?
Yeah.
At Phillips.
Phillips Recreation Center.
4:30 to 5:30. Okay, and that's being hosted by Bronn Russell, Russo, who's the contractor for the project.
Yes. And if anybody had any questions about any of the capital projects?
Yeah, I was just hoping you could send a, kind of a list and email so that we had a reference.
Sure.
Thank you. Dates and projects, that kind of stuff.
I will do that.
Bill.
Yeah, and I wasn't criticizing the staff that are there. I'm sure they're working hard, and, you know, there's plenty to do without extra capital improvement, you know, piling things on existing staff. I did have a question on the Washington construction. Originally, that was budgeted as a resurfacing, and then we talked about doing a complete reconstruction. So, did it end up as a complete reconstruction?
Yes. Yes, so you'll see a budget amendment on that. And one of the things that we're doing, and I, and again, I have to give staff credit for this, is that was going to be a mix of dollars, local dollars and motor fuel tax dollars, and we've, we now have a new approach, which is we're trying to, since motor fuel tax dollars, those plans have to be approved by IDOT, and that adds more process and more time. Where possible, we're trying to limit those projects that require motor fuel tax dollars to ones that maybe already have to go to IDOT, and so, we're going to be shifting some things around, so the Vine Street, Vine and Washington Project can go forward this year because we're using all local money.
And then...
So, you'll see a budget amendment for that when we have the cost estimate.
I think at one time, Public Works mentioned it met the warrants for a traffic light there, but it wasn't feasible, really, to put a traffic light there. So, with a total reconstruction, that's kind of, I mean, it seems to me like that's a, you know, you're reconstructing it for a 30-year time period or 20-year time period or something. Would that rule out putting lights there if it demands it in 10 years? Or would it, I mean, I'm thinking, would it make more sense to just do a resurfacing if it's going to be something that we have to reconstruct in 10 years for lights or something?
Well, we're talking primarily about the reconstruction being the road surface and the curbs, and so, I think one of the biggest obstacles for putting the traffic signal in is that we would have to acquire private property, and, and there's a substantial expense. So, I think that's something that we can look at over time, but given that the road is falling apart quickly and we have this window that we can get in, we, we want to, we want to move on that reconstruction project, but not lose track of the traffic signal. It just can't move forward at the same pace.
But we are enhancing the stop signs.
That we are. This will be a bigger-than-normal stop sign, and it will have lights around, LED lights around the outside of it, so nobody can miss it.
Okay.
If they're looking.
Definitely needs, okay, thanks.
Jared.
Oh, one thing that I just caught my head because of earlier conversation and then capital improvement projects, do we not have some city dollars tied to the hotel redevelopment? To do their parking lot or something along those lines, or the street improvement?
We had done the improvements to that little section of Green Street that extends east of Race. We did that last year.
Okay, is that the only thing that we had tied to that?
In terms of infrastructure that was specific to the hotel?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And we removed that planter as well.
Yeah.
Right, right, right. I couldn't remember if that was the only one or not, or if that was something we'd be looking forward to next year?
No, but they're looking forward to EMCOR Phase 5 being done.
Yes, okay, thanks.
And we, we've received a draft copy of the analysis of the intersection of Main and Vine, the pedestrian, the pedestrian safety, I'm not sure, what do we call it?
It's really just an evaluation of the intersection against industry standards in a variety of ways, and once that's final, then we'll bring it to council.
That should be coming in a few weeks.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Carol?
Okay. New business, we have two items. One is a resolution number 2020-02-011R, which is a resolution accepting a senseless census implementation grant from the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District. And that's, Sheila, did you want to speak to this?
Sure. The Urbana Public Health received a sum of money for this region, I think there's five counties, and then individual agencies were able to apply as a subrecipient. So, Urbana staff identified renters and students as our hard-to-count population, and so, we requested funding to help reach out to that group of people. And it is a reimbursement grant.
And the amount is 56...
404.
56,404. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make that motion. I'd like to move approval of resolution number 2020-02-011R, a resolution accepting a census implementation grant from the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District.
Second.
That was Jared.
Jared. I soon won't have this problem. Regrettable. Any discussion? Mary Alice.
So, this grant is for $56,000 for staff time and materials. Does that mean the city's going to be hiring part-time people?
No, we're using existing staff, and then we had budgeted two interns, but we have a very short period of time, so we're just kind of offsetting our time that we're spending on it for...
So, is there any, any, anything that will be delayed on the...
I don't think so. This week, we plan on, you know, if this gets approved tonight, we're going to buy tablets. We're moving forward as if we've got the money, because it's too important to the city to not participate and, and get the grants, so.
So, how are you going to be using tablets to be able to capture students?
And we're going to set up hubs, and so, we're really more focused on renters. We're doing education outreach to the students along with the University of Illinois, but we assume most students are renters, too, so if we focus on that broader population. So, right now, our plans are to order tablets this week, do work with the library to do hubs to have people come in, be able to look at the forms, fill them out there where they are. At the library, we're also going to have the kiosk out here available for people to come in and be able to complete the census here if they'd like. And then, finally, we're going to do two major mailings, one the first part of March, just kind of saying, you know, look out, your, your form's on the way, and you count. And then, we're going to do another drop right after spring break to just another reminder that, hey, this, this information's coming, and it's important to Urbana that you complete the census.
Is there any possibility of setting up stations within university areas such as PAR, at the Union? You have to kind of go where the students are, right?
Right, right, yeah, and we are working closely with the University of Illinois on that cooperation and seeing where we can all work together to capture that.
Okay, I mean, it would be, students don't generally check, like, physical mail?
Right.
So, if we're really trying to reach out to students, they're...
Right, and was it Carol, and I might get this wrong, but they were going to send an email blast out to the, to all of the students and along those same timelines, because we all know the students, you know...
Will there be a link in the email? I'm just thinking, you have to make it easy for students, right?
Totally agree. Yeah, there will be a link. Right, and we're, we're going to be double-checking to not, you know, to make sure, like, don't just tell us in general what you're going to do. Tell us specifically what you're going to do, so we can give them some advice. But the students that live in residence halls will be counted in a sort of centralized process.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so, and we have good relationships through the fire department with people that are living in the, the Greek houses, and we'll be leveraging those relationships. So, so I think we're actually in pretty good shape with the students.
I mean, you can, there's, there's hotspots, right? So, there's CRC in Urbana. I mean, you have to go where people are congregating, so I appreciate the information on PAR and Daniels and Orchard Downs and so forth. Orchard Downs counting that?
We're going to double-check, we're, we're double-checking everything.
Okay.
And the university is an active partner in this count process, so Regional Plan Commission, City of Champaign, Savoy, Urbana, and the University of Illinois are all working cooperatively to try to count as many as we can.
And the New American Welcome Center.
Township, will they have a, a station?
Yep.
Excellent, okay.
Yep, even Urbana.
You guys have it under control, I just...
Yeah, Urbana Neighborhood Connections is also a subrecipient of this grant, so...
And as far as staff, Wendy in the clerk's office, Elizabeth, Alyssa and Sheila and Grants and Bridgette Brohan, our communications person, have been spending a great deal of time working with Jason as well, and they just completed four 30-second spots that we're going to start running everywhere in Mandarin, Spanish, French, and English, basically getting the message out as well. So, there's, there's, you know, multimedia approach. Eric.
You didn't mention canvassing door-to-door. Is that because you're not going to do it, or...
The census actually hires people to do that individually.
The way it works, and I just, if you had listened to my newsletter, you would know all this, but I talked for five minutes this month, but the, the mailing goes out in late March and the reminding people to go online, so they're hoping to get most people to respond by going online and answering the questions online. And then, if people don't respond, that'll be followed up with two or three mailings after that, and then, if people still don't respond, that's when they do the door-to-door to follow up with all the nonrespondents. The challenge here is that the thing, the initial mailing goes out when the students leave for spring break, so they're not here anyway, and, and then, they're gone, many of the undergraduates are gone by mid-May, and the follow-up doesn't really start until about mid-May, so the students are a key, a key factor. But, but yeah, the door-to-door is after the initial mailings to kind of sweep up the people who haven't responded, and they're still looking for canvassers who will be paid $20.50 an hour if people are looking for a part-time job for a few months this summer.
Why are you looking at me?
I was thinking of, I was thinking of people who have college students, who are looking, who need to be employed.
Any courses, Dean?
Complex, sir.
Sorry.
No, I'm playing with you.
Okay, where are we?
Motion in a second.
Motion in a second, is there, can, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Wu?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes, indeed.
Hazen?
Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item on the agenda is ordinance 2020-02-006, which is an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, and this allows us to accept this grant. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jared. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Wu?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes, that motion passes. And with no further business before the council, this meeting is adjourned.